...meeting of the Mobile Planning, City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing session, an application or a group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation, commission members ask questions if any, members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and for against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. After four minutes, a loud beat will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. Mr. Gant will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application, and results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise during the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or to call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary member will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions subject to appeal on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decision. Please turn off your cell phones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking.
Ms. Libby Latham.
Here.
Ms. Jennifer Denson. Mr. John Valas.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Thomas Doyle.
Mr. Taylor Etchison.
Yes.
Ms. Kena Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich.
Here.
Mr. Don Hembry.
Here.
Mr. Alan Cameron.
Here.
We have a quorum. We'll start with our item one, our extensions.
Armored keys, row one.
Of Ms. Libby Latham is recusing on this item. Extension thirty-nine forty-five and thirty-nine forty-nine, Government Boulevard. It is recommended for a one-year extension. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this? Thank you. Item number two, nine oh-one, nine oh-three, and nine eleven Dolphin Street. Recommended for a one-year extension. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement. Anyone here for or against? Thank you. Item number three, fifty-one thirteen Hall Smith Road. Recommended for one-year extension. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement? Applicant is present and in agreement. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Next, our new subdivision applications. Item number four, five oh-nine Donald Street. Recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? The applicant present for five oh-nine Donald Street? Applicant is not present. Is there anyone here to speak? Else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against this? Item number five, twenty-nine twenty-one Airport Boulevard and three nineteen South Sage Avenue. Recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant present? Are you in a... Ms. Libby Latham is recusing on item number five. Are you in agreement with staff recommendations? Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. Item number six, one, one-two-three-four-one Airport Boulevard. Recommended for tentative approval.
Brettle rail with poly surveying. Our client came to us on Friday and asked us to reduce the number of lots on this particular subdivision. We submitted that to staff. What it is, we've combined lots five and six to be one lot, so we're now just a five-lot subdivision. So, I don't see any information here that necessarily we need to change. I think we're good. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that's what we'd be doing. The only thing I would request from the commission is to consider, in lieu of dedication of ten-foot along this frontage here, that we amend the setback to be, as if dedication would be in the future, to be seventy-five feet from the center line of the road. So, just I ask you to consider that. That would be my only request for change.
Brad, what was that request again? You're on the center line, you said seventy-five feet?
Yeah, that would be, that would take in a future dedication of fifty feet from the center line plus the twenty-five-foot setback.
Any comments from staff regarding the revised site plan?
The revised site plan, reducing the number of lots is fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Item number seven, West Terminus of Moses Way. Labrador-run Phase III subdivision. This is recommended for a holdover. Probably be granted. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement with the holdover?
Yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement. This item will be available for anyone to speak for or against at the meeting that it is held over to. However, you can make remarks now if you so choose. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this? Thank you. New planned unit applications. Item number eight, fifty-four oh-one Cottage Hill Road. This item is recommended for holdover. Applicant present? Are you in agreement with the holdover?
Yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement. The holdover will probably be granted, and at such a time when it is taken up, you will have the opportunity to speak for or against it. However, if anyone wishes to speak now, they may.
My name is Monique Morrow. I live at twenty-three hundred Vivian Drive.
Could you pull the mic down some, please? Thank you.
My name is Ms. Morrow. I live at twenty-three hundred Vivian Drive. I'm opposed to a holdover because this bothers my life of getting in and out of my subdivision. There's one way in and one way out. Meat Boss parks on both sides of our street. Our street is a very narrow street. It's very dangerous coming off of Cottage Hill Road to get into my neighborhood. An emergency vehicle could not get down that street if they needed to in the middle of the day when they're having their lunch hour. Everything that's on this paper that y'all have already spoken about is true, and they need to do so. I've even talked to them about doing something about it, and they say that the parking is not their problem. They are the problem for the parking. We've had many businesses there before. It was never a problem. When they first started, they were doing a pickup. That wasn't a problem. But when they started a sit-down restaurant, they don't have proper parking for the people that they're serving. It's dangerous for their people that are eating there because of them crossing the street and cars coming off of Cottage Hill Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Easterling. I agree with everything that Ms. Morrow has said. I live at two-two-six-four Vivian Drive. I've lived there for twenty-seven years. I have, as she has said, it's always had a business at the end of the street. We have no qualms about that whatsoever, and let me say, please, that we're not trying to get the Chinatown holding place to close down, Meat Boss. What we really, really want y'all to do is to assure us that all of these recommendations that are met, they're accurate. We've called and complained many times, and we really felt like... I went through the neighborhood this week and talked to people who I knew weren't going to be here, and their main concern was they were afraid that people weren't going to take us into consideration. The road at the end of the street is being used like a parking lot, and we have had numerous almost incidents. People get out of their cars, they don't see, they don't look, they open the car doors, they step out in front of you. People coming in off of the parking lot of Meat Boss will pull out onto Vivian and never even look because they can't see, because the vehicles, they're usually there are trucks and things because it's lunchtime fare, and there's just nowhere for anybody to go. I've almost gotten hit, but having somebody pulling into Cottage Hill on me while I... from Cottage Hill onto Vivian while I was sitting there trying to pull out because they couldn't go around me, both places were blocked. I've also been the person on Cottage Hill coming in, and had a gentleman last week or the week before, I was following him onto Vivian Drive. He pulled into the drive and stopped right at the end of the street for somebody else to move so he could get their parking space, and I had to back into the park, I had to back into the turn lane. We have had that happen so many times, and everybody that I have talked to in my neighborhood this past week, the first thing that they said is, "We don't mind the place being there. We're glad there's a business there, but we need to have our right-of-way respected. We need to know that the emergency vehicles..." We have a lot of older people that live there who, if they had an emergency, if we had a fire, God forbid, we would not, we would be, there would be a delay. There's no way that somebody could come in without it. There are no, we have no hard feelings except that we felt like we have all approached the gentleman, the business, many times, and we've been told by the customers that there's nothing we can do. It's not his problem about parking. I worked for a construction company for fifteen years, a general contractor. I know that parking is y'all's business and it is his responsibility. So, all we really ask is that you just assure us that you will make sure and do everything you can to enforce the fact that he does all this. If that does, we'll be the best neighbors he ever had, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Moving to new rezoning applications. Item number nine, two-thirty-one East Drive. This application is recommended for denial. Is the applicant present? Are you in agreement?
Hey, how you doing? Jared Erby, live at two-fourteen Hall Branch Road. We are, we're a local investment company, and we're looking at a project for luxury condos on East Drive, just south of Old Shell Road. It requires a zoning change to R-3. Obviously, you know, we noticed today that it was recommended for denial, but you guys previously had recommended a zoning change for R-3 approval where the staff report indicated that it was, you know, fit into the character of the neighborhood, and there's a lot of R-3 development going on in the, in the current area. It is actually right across from an R-2 parcel. But what we're planning to do is an eighteen-unit luxury condominium complex because there's just a ton of demand for housing in the area, and there's actually R-3 projects going on just in the immediate vicinity, right around there. You know, between myself and my partners, we've done, you know, dozens of projects in Mobile, all of them supporting, you know, the local economy, excuse me, the local economy, you know, contributing millions of dollars, you know, right into the area. And, and we feel that, you know, our project is definitely, you know, basically meeting a need that, you know, that's there, you know, clearly there. And, you know, we're planning on spending about four million dollars to make it happen, which is going straight into the local economy. You know, the lot that's there right now is, is currently just overgrown and, and, you know, undeveloped, bringing in about four hundred dollars a year in property tax revenue. And we're estimating that ours will bring in approximately forty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue and still fit in with the character of the neighborhood and provide a luxury product that's really needed in that area. So, at this time, I'm, I've kind of said what I needed to say, but I'd like to turn it over to Clark Kelly, my partner, and maybe he can tell you a little bit more.
Good afternoon, I'm Clark Kelly. I live at twenty-four sixty-six E. Loon Drive here in Mobile, and I'm a member of the applicant company, Azalea Investors LLC. Our group has a contract to purchase the subject property that's contingent on the success of our application for R-3 zoning. My partners and I live and work, and we raise our families here in Mobile. We're not out-of-town developers, and we care about the concerns of neighbors and neighborhoods throughout the city, including this one. That's one reason we took the time just the other day to canvass the area in advance of today's meeting, introduce ourselves to the residents, and take cues from the diverse mix of people and housing stock in close proximity to the project. Directly across the street, for example, Magnolia Drive, Magnolia Place East and Sussex Drive, both zoned R-2. There we found owner-occupied and rental homes. We found freestanding houses and townhouses. We met retired physicians, current undergrad and medical students, university employees, and other individuals and families, and this experience brought to mind the map for Mobile's first principle, the first principle statement that envisions areas where, quote, "A mix of housing types provides for residents' diverse needs," unquote. Now, north by only five lots, Wyndham Court is zoned R-3. Next to that is an apartment complex, also R-3, an Islamic center, a Jehovah's Witness building, and at the corner of Old Shell Road, commercial businesses. All this may explain why planning staff and this commission previously recommended for a change to R-3 the last time the subject came up. East Drive also provides entry into the decidedly R-1, East Ridge and Shenandoah neighborhoods to the south, and those neighborhoods begin where the more diverse section, the northern section of East Drive ends, and that is at Twelve Mile Creek. The subject property lies north of the creek and north of a natural buffer strip of city property immediately adjacent to the creek. North of Twelve Mile Creek is where the diverse mix of use is needed due to consistent year-over-year growth of the nearby University of South Alabama and the commercialization of Old Shell Road, and that north block of East Drive is where such diverse zoning and usage exists today. We invited our neighbors to an informal meeting on July twenty-fifth. Two households were represented, in addition to Mrs. Rich, who was also in attendance. None of the dozens of folks we'd personally met in our canvassing efforts came out to comment, but during our meeting, Mrs. Rich remarked that varied residential uses can be inherently incompatible. Thus, she explained, a recently approved five-acre project on West Drive was allowed to move forward, at least in part, because the developer was willing to build a wall and plant extensive vegetation to shield it from the R-1 neighborhood that was immediately next door, across the fence. Her point is well-taken. In the case of the subject property, such buffering is naturally provided for by the creek and the wooded strip of city property next to it. On what is currently an overgrown vacant lot, we are pursuing a condominium project that we believe will enhance the area. Set off from the street behind generous landscaping and shielded from view on either side by wooded lots, our vision for a low-density luxury condominium development stands in contrast to that of recent high-density developments just up the street. Seen from East Drive, our proposed project would resemble one generous single-family home with a side driveway. Only upon entering that driveway would one encounter additional structures. To this area of diverse needs, we offer separately-deeded homes with an aesthetic of coastal board-and-batten metal roof construction, not the kind of high-density, low-cost construction apartment complex another R-3 developer might push. For obvious reasons, the north section of East Drive is an area that will continue to attract the attention of developers. That said, we believe we offer a more attractive alternative versus others that certainly will come along.
Thank you. Any questions by commissioners?
Richard, could you elaborate? I've not looked up section sixty-four-nine. Could you tell us what that addresses?
Those minimum standards are the...
Acreage? Acreage?
Yeah, the size of the proposed district, and for an R-3, the minimum size for a freestanding district would be four acres. This site falls below that. They are correct. There is property across the street that is zoned R-2, but this is a more intense zoning classification than the R-2. If it were reversed, that might be a consideration, but since it's going to a heavier, if you will, classification, that allowance in the ordinance is not applicable. The other R-3 in the area, the Wyndham Court, those are detached, single-family structures. The R-2 across the street, those are attached townhomes, but they're single-family townhomes that are... And let's see, the other recent application that was referred to is the one, the Landing, where there were the single-family appearance or appearing dwellings that had the four and five bedrooms.
Right, and the biggest thing was the traffic cannot come off of West Drive. The screening is wonderful for abutting the residential, the R-1, but the main thing was the traffic and keeping them off of West. It can only go in center.
And in the reference to the wooded property adjacent being screening, the property to the north is a lot that could be developed at any time, so that, that may not necessarily be a permanent consideration for screening.
Mr. Olson, they, they, both of them said that it had previously been approved as an R-3. Is that...
I think they said previously recommended for approval. It's not referenced in the staff report, and I'll be honest, I don't recall.
I don't either.
So, I'm not sure where that is. We can check.
I'm interested to learn the four-acre minimum lot size for rezoning to R-3. That would be a really large complex. We have R-3 multifamily lots throughout Midtown and Downtown next to single-family that are on much smaller lots. What, and from what I understand, the new code or the new planning we're considering is to allow for even more diversity in land use than we currently have. How should we look at what we're moving towards and the consideration of this application?
Well, there is a possibility, a very real possibility, that the new zoning ordinance will make such allowances. We do not have that at this point. We don't really even have a good draft of what those new zoning districts will look like, so I would be hard-pressed to provide an answer on that.
It does seem like, I mean, a lot of the multifamily projects we've actually approved for apartments under R-3 are in density of, you know, exceeding twenty units an acre. So, I mean, they're looking at nine units per acre if I did my math correct, which...
The density proposed here is lower than a lot of the apartment developments that have been before this commission.
So, could they not do, can they not do townhomes in R-2 with planning approval?
The, with a PUD, and that's one of the things that's referenced in the staff report, is that this development would also require a PUD, which was not submitted.
Like you're saying, if it's done in R-2, it's a plus.
Yes, and that was what was done with the development on Old Shell Road. Admittedly, it was much, a lot fewer units, but the, it was rezoned to R-2 with a PUD with two units per building.
And I'm sure we'll hear some, some opposition, but also maybe bring the applicant back down and see if we just did a holdover and let them reconsider doing an R-2 subject to a PUD.
And submitting a PUD?
Yes. I don't... But again, I think there's other people here to speak, so we'll hear from those.
And we just got a text about the previous application. It was in two thousand and seven. It was approved by the planning commission for a duplex, but it was denied by city council.
And also comparing an apartment complex in Midtown to what is out in, for student housing, for the most part, is a little different profile for additional parking being needed because the competition is pretty much renting by the bedroom, so that changed the dynamics. And we're also talking about owner-occupied apartment complexes, and well, that wasn't really apartment. That came in as R-2 on Old Shell, but that is individual, is what the applicant said. They weren't necessarily rental.
Right.
Yeah.
They were too, the intent was to be condos.
And they also talked about building materials and actually listed the building materials as part of their PUD and their screening and fencing and heights of things.
Is there anyone else here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against?
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Lee. I reside at three hundred Trent Mill Court. I'm currently the president of Ridgefield Property Owners Association. We are the large subdivision to the south of this proposal. Ridgefield does not support the development as it is proposed. We see this as another proposed development that's attempting too much for too little space. The proposed development has a vertical aspect to it. They're calling for three stories. The gentleman pointed out that the footprint, the way it looks, you would drive by and look at what would appear to be a single-family home. I'd like to add, it would be a three-story family home appearance with a pitched metal roof. That would be very overwhelming. For those of you who are familiar with East Drive, the original development was nothing but R-1. This is a very small road that goes out into a very major, busy intersection. With the assistance of this planning commission prior to this, the large apartment complex is currently under development. They were not granted access to East Drive because of traffic concerns. This is one of our problems that we have, is traffic concerns. We continue to be a sought-after location, the entire area between Hillcrest, University, Airport, and of course, Old Shell Road to the north. Residents are looking to establish themselves with long-term goals, and they're looking to put down roots in the community. I would like to add, they are proposing... Swimming pool, hot tub, outside, eating areas, anything like that. It seems to be buildings and parking places. The other thing, I was able to use the city's online mapping system and pulled the lot up, and I did the flood zone overlay, and I'm not the expert, and somebody can certainly pitch in here, it appears that half this lot lies in the flood zone area. That's really all I have to say. In closing, I'd like to thank the staff and the commission for all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Wendell Sawyer. I own property at 5914 East Woods Place. We are the subdivision directly south across the creek from this proposed development. This development will negatively impact our subdivision and our 14 property owners that we have. I'm also the head of the Property Owners Association there. And East Road cannot deal with the traffic of that density of housing, and much less the stress it's going to put on East Ridgefield in people traveling to Airport Boulevard through that area. So, we are opposed to it, and any questions?
Mr. Sawyer, but I mean, let me just say, we're talking about nine units. I mean, I just don't see the burden of traffic that nine units is going to put on East Drive. And then you speak to the additional burden it's going to put on the Ridgefield subdivision, but the Ridgefield subdivision has their own access off Airport Boulevard. So, we're going to deny this property owner their potential rights to develop their property that is on East Drive for people in Ridgefield that are using East Drive as a counter.
Well, that was as planned. This was all single-family development when East Drive was developed, as is East Woods Place subdivision is single-family. Ridgefield is single-family. There's a lot of single families.
But I just think all that has somewhat changed in that area based on kind of what has taken place in that area. But again, I, again, there's other people to speak. I just, I don't feel like the traffic is going to be that burdensome from nine units.
Well, that's definitely your opinion, but you don't have, you don't, I don't know that you have a, an interest right there in that property, which I do. Also, I own five other properties in my subdivision also that we're developing. Very concerned about property values being negatively affected also.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
My name is Mary Devera. I live in Sussex Place Townhomes at 6004 Sussex Drive. We have been before the zoning, the planning commission multiple times in the last 20 years. Magnolia Place was originally supposed to be an R3 development, and while we welcome the development, we are very grateful to the staff for trying to maintain the character of our neighborhood and the density. When we went before the planning commission the first time, they had expressed in their decision to us that from the creek down would be R1, and that we would be a band of R2, a transitional neighborhood, going into R3 as it gets closer to Old Shell Road. I've talked to the people, the elderly people in the homes just to the east of East Drive. If that bottom, that southern lot goes R3, there will be no barrier to the next lot going R3, and it will be like dominoes falling all the way up to that R3, and we will be surrounded by R3 except our southwest. I agree with the earlier speaker who said about the three stories. That's very tall in this area. Magnolia Place is a single floor. We are the tallest at two floors, and it's not until you get up into the apartment complexes further north near the university that it's taller. We're trying to preserve our neighborhood, our quiet, our cleanliness. This is just too dense a development for us and our neighbors, and we would welcome something at a lower density. In fact, we're very appreciative when these constructions decide to put in Magnolia Place instead of their original development. So, just wanted to say that we very much appreciate the help of the planning commission and staff, and that we would like to maintain that, at least an R2 buffer, and that helps us cut down, I know the traffic is not a concern because they've been feeding it out to Old Shell and others, but, you know, if this lot goes, then the others behind it will have nothing to say about it, and it will be R3 the whole way down south to the creek. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate if you would deny this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak against? The applicant has the opportunity to respond to any comments.
So, we certainly respect all the opinions that were presented, but one thing I wanted to highlight was, you know, the last owner of the property actually presented an application for R2 zoning. The staff recommended that for denial, and then the planning commission, you know, and then they recommended the applicant come back and ask for R3 zoning, which then the R3 zoning was actually approved. And so, that's what we're asking for, is the same thing, exactly the same thing that's already been approved in the past, you know? And I think that since the last time that that's happened, that there's only been more development in the area. You know, there's a significant amount of development happening, and, you know, the last time that it came up for a staff report, it literally said in the staff report that R3 zoning fits the character and use of the area.
Okay. Any comments by commissioners?
Quick question. You've got six buildings, but how many actual individual units, condo units will you have in these buildings?
It's 18 total units, three per building. And it's actually two, it's actually going to be in two phases, the first two buildings, you know, and then depending on how it goes, you know, go from there afterwards.
How many bedrooms?
There are four bedrooms per unit.
Richard, at three units per building, are we not right up against an R2, would be allowed an R2? What's the difference here?
R2 would be two units per building, and that's one of the things with the Old Shell application that occurred. Even though there were multiple buildings on the site that exceeded two units, because there were more than two units in one of the buildings, that was going to be an issue, which is also why, one of the reasons why they reduced the number of units so that each building would only have two units.
Since the density's brought up, can I mention something else? If you look right across the street at Sussex Place, you can clearly see that, you know, it may be zoned R2, but the size of the lots that they're on, you know, we're not proposing to build anything that's any more dense than that. In fact, I actually believe it's significantly less dense than that as far as the number of units on, you know, a per-acre basis.
Is this, these are condos or is it student housing or...
They're condos.
Okay.
We don't get into that.
There's nothing, no way for us to regulate whether it's a condo or an apartment.
So, Mr. Irving, when, last time when it came before the planning commission, the planning commission only recommended that it be R3 to the city council, and the city council denied that, correct? Is that what happened?
No, they didn't actually deny it. They held it over, and the previous owners didn't pursue it after that.
We don't have the file with us, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Well, that's what we do, is we recommend on zoning applications, we don't, we're not the final say. We recommend what we think it ought to be to the city council, and the city council has the final say. Would you at all consider an R2 with a PUD as opposed to an R3, which would have, be more in line with what Sussex Place and Magnolia Place are zoning?
Well, we actually had a pre-development meeting, and we asked that same question, and the pre-development meeting, they told us that we should pursue R3 zoning.
Well, if it's denied, if the R3 is denied today as opposed to a holdover with a request for something else, then you have to, what is the time period that they have to wait before they can reapply?
Six months.
There's a six-month time period.
Even if it's a different zoning?
If it's a different zoning classification and a different application, you do not have to wait six months, but if it's basically the same application that the commission considered, you do have to wait six months.
Look, I certainly respect the process, but the last time that R2 application was presented for this property, the city council, or I'm sorry, not the city council, the planning commission and the planning staff recommended it to be R3 as opposed to R2 because that was more fitting with the neighborhood and the development and everything that was going on with the neighborhood.
And when was that? What year was that? Was that, did you say that was 2007?
Correct.
But since then, I mean, you know, some of these other projects may have been developed since that time, so, you know, I think, you know, Sussex Place or Magnolia, I can't remember when those were developed, but now that they are developed, it seemed like R2 may be more appropriate, I think is...
I believe that last time that those were actually presented, that this was presented, that was already R2. I'm not sure whether it was built or not, but it was already that zoning.
Sussex Place or Magnolia? Sussex Place has been...
Since the 80s?
Yeah, and it was problematic at the time, coming through the commission and the council.
It just came through a variance that was denied too, for like a triplex.
Right.
The Board of Adjustment said no.
And also, at the other end of Sussex, they've combined lots into, to make larger lots so they could have larger homes.
Yes, and they're single-family, I mean, individual lots.
Well, we certainly want to be responsible neighbors. You know, you guys tell us what we need to do to make it happen, and we certainly will evaluate it, but it seems like a little bit of a feedback loop where, you know, R2 is presented, R3 is recommended, then we ask for R3, and then that's, you know, the staff recommends it for denial. So, you know, tell us what we need to do to, you know, help out and make it work and be good neighbors, and we certainly will. You know, we're just trying to provide a need for the area.
Richard, how many properties can be put on this property? How many structures can be put on this property? Dwelling units? Maximum in R2?
R2?
Right.
Yeah, I guess where he's leading is you could probably achieve the same density they're proposing through a different design in an R2.
And should have even to be higher.
Or higher even, which, you know, should be a...
And they'd have to meet the parking ratio as well for the R2, correct? Or just R3?
I think it's R3 that has to meet the...
It's not the R2?
Correct. I think it's...
It's not considered?
If I recall the amendment correctly, it's student housing, or R3 zoning, not R2.
I thought it read multifamily.
Which is...
Could be R2 or R3?
R3 zoning is multifamily. You know, R2 zoning is usually considered duplexes.
I see.
Yeah, and in our pre-development meeting, our original, you know, idea was R2, and then the staff indicated that, you know, R3 would be a better, a better fit.
It's mine and the staff's opinion that if this R3 is denied, they can come back with an R2 application in a PUD without having to wait six months. So, y'all can either do that or hold it over and let them reevaluate their options.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And you have to have common space in a PUD, correct? Open space, certain percentage of open space?
This is a subject that we can ask to call open up.
The materials, if it's voluntarily put out?
New group applications. Item number 10402, St. Anthony Street, recommended for tentative approval. Mr. Cameron's recusing. The applicant present?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Applicant is present and in agreement with staff recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak for this? Anyone here to speak against? Thank you. We will now go into deliberation. Item number 1, 3945 or 3949, Government Boulevard, is recommended for an extension of one year. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Item number 2, 901, 903 and 911, Dolphin Street, is recommended for a one-year extension. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 3, 5113, Halls Mill Roads, both parts A and B are recommended for a one-year extension. Is there a motion?
Submove. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposedes? Pass. New subdivision applications. 509 Donald Street, recommended for tentative approval. The applicant was not present. Can we still move on this, staff?
If you choose to, you could act on it, whether the applicant was here or not.
Okay. It's recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Item number 1, 2921, Airport Boulevard and 319 South Sage, Ms. Latham is recused. It's recommended for tentative approval. Is there a motion?
Recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 6, 12341, Airport Boulevard, is recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendation. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation, deleting, I think the request was to delete number, lot number 6, and just have a five-lot subdivision, and then they had requested that we just change the dedication, center line to airport to 75 feet.
Correct. Setback, and that would also then change condition number 2, so it would just be a setback from the future major street right away, and in parentheses, 75 feet from center line.
Okay. That's the motion.
Second motion as stated.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 7, West Terminus of Moses Way, extending to the east side of Rex Drive, this is recommended for a holdover until September 7th meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Pass. Held over till Sept, September 7th. New planned unit development applications. 5401 Cottage Hill, recommended for a holdover. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded for a holdover to the September 7th meeting. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to get staff to clarify what's actually, and this looks to me like they're just sort of reconfiguring the current layout of their parking lot.
No, sir. Actually, what they are doing is multiple things. One, and let me get the projector back on. One of the things they are doing is getting approval, they had to move the smoker from out front to here, Board of Health requirements. There are some other issues with the Board of Health requiring that it be in an enclosed structure and that the distance between the smoker and the building be enclosed. There is also an issue where they are proposing to expand and provide additional seating in another unit, which increases the parking requirement for the site. So, like I said, there are multiple aspects of what you're considering. So, like I said, there are multiple aspects of what you're considering with this application.
Right.
How do people get around the smoker to get to the...
They actually, they come, there's a driveway right here.
Oh, that's further down Vivian.
Right, further down Vivian. This is an existing driveway. It's actually rather wide, I think it actually comes to here.
Yes, you can appreciate it, but if they have to put a structure, it might be harder.
Right, I mean, currently they can, you can travel down here, there's an electrical box right in this area that also bottlenecks the flow of traffic, but it is doable.
And they're supposed to close the drive up on Vivian?
The...
Further up towards Cottage Hill?
No, they're not going to close either one, they are going to, this drive here, here is where the curb cut starts, and it continues down to about here.
I see.
And this area is predominantly paved. What, one of the things would be that they would need to make this a 24-foot driveway, removing this paving and installing the appropriate delineation for the driveway as well as landscaped area.
And how much parking will this increase?
I'm sorry?
How much parking will be increased with this? Going to 51, is it 51 or something?
I counted 50 spaces, not including the handicap, but they're not increasing the parking, just the restaurant requires additional parking, correct?
Right, and that's what's going to then create the parking deficit on site.
But they're not adding any new parking spaces.
What's the proposed, what's in the back? That's already there and they're using that?
What's in back? Yes, ma'am, that is already there.
Oh, I see.
You can see it on the photo here.
But it's dirt.
No, it's paved.
Oh, okay, it looks like dirt.
Right here is paved. This is the garage auto repair that's on a separate lot, which is why there is the PUD in the first place and has been for a number of years, was to allow that shared access.
Now, with the...
But the minute they expand the restaurant and also use, count the tables in the front, their parking goes into arrears.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the new parking, in addition, even, in addition to expanding the restaurant with the new parking as shown, account for the fact that 25% of their parking's lost currently due to the car repairs?
There is, again, there is no new parking. I'm not sure how many of the cars from the auto repair actually park on the strip center site, but you can see a fairly large number of cars parked over here where the auto repair is.
Those cars are usually being worked on, they're just there.
Yeah, and there recently were cars, a number of cars parked on this little dirt area that is not their property.
Richard, why is it the parking issue addressed in the recommendations? Unless I'm overlooking it, I don't see it in there. I mean, if you have the description of the problem up top, nothing addressed in the recommendations.
That's one of the reasons we are requesting a holdover, was so that we can look at the entire thing, and maybe say the relocation of the smoker is okay, but not the expansion on, into the additional space. You know, it's not an easy application.
Martin's parking is going to be the main obstacle to overcome, so...
Are we ready for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
This is to hold it up?
This is to hold over?
To the next meeting.
September 7th. Does that give the staff enough time to review all the parking issues?
Well, the holdover is recommended until September 7th.
That is two.
That's two meetings.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This will be held over to the September 7th meeting.
Can I make a recommendation to the people that came down to speak their concerns that they get a copy of this report so they can read the staff's dialogue on this? Or is it, is that on the web?
It is on the website.
Okay, for anybody to lift?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to do that. Okay, great, thank you.
New rezoning application, item number 9, 231 East Drive, it's recommended for denial.
So moved?
I didn't make a motion.
I'm going to make it. I'm going to go with the staff recommendation. I understand that there's an option to come back and lay it out as an R2, but that doesn't continue this one in that manner, and we don't penalize them that they have to wait. If I heard this correctly, that we have to wait, they have to wait any length of time, there's no, there's no calendar on that. So, I would like to respect the staff's position, I agree with it wholeheartedly, and hope this commission does the same on the R3 as it's proposed.
Can I comment? My argument there would be, we've laid out that if they come back and propose an R2, it potentially will be allowed to even use a higher density, and the neighbors have voiced that their main concern is the density and traffic, and...
And, I'm sorry, I did calculate, again, look, check, double-check the ordinance, calculate it again, they would not be able to have a higher density. The ordinance requires a minimum of 8,000 square feet of property for each two-family dwelling.
Which puts us where? Did you do the math?
I'm sorry?
Where does that put us for the density of an R2 development?
Uh, 10, 11 units, I believe.
Yeah, about 86,000 square feet of land, and what'd you say, 8,000 per unit?
And they have two acres.
Some of its wetlands that was bought out too.
Right.
So that might not even all go into the mix.
I have a procedural question. If we were to deny it today and they had to file a new application, what would be the length of time before that application would be heard, as opposed to holding it over for them to...
If they were to change the application to a different zoning classification, different site plan, because it would be making two units per building, then they could reapply for the next deadline or the following one, they would not have to wait six months.
But how long between reapplying before they get on our, what's the length of time for...
Oh, between the application and on the agenda, publicing, roughly a month.
Let me just, I mean, do they, if it was a holdover, and they revised it from R3 to R2, can, does that, they still have to pay all the same fees, I mean, then just, does anything change from a burdensome sample?
They're going to have to do a PUD anyhow. They would not, if it were held over, they would not have to pay the fees for the rezoning application, but they would for the PUD application. If it's denied, they would have to pay the fees for both applications.
If it was held over, they'd probably get on the agenda a little bit sooner if you did a one-month holdover.
Two minutes.
There's no way they can get on September.
They still have to meet the deadline for the PUD.
I got you.
It'd take six weeks at least to get in the PUD and advertising, you're looking at a month, you're looking at at least three meetings.
Either, either way.
Because of having to submit the PUD.
What would happen if they withdrew their application right now?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
What would happen if they withdrew right now?
If they withdrew right now, they could reapply for the next, as long as they had their PUD application ready to submit at the next deadline, they could apply for the next deadline.
Any thoughts from the owner? You've heard some options here, do you have a preference? Not that...
Well, the staff report was you guys recommended it not be R3, so if we resubmitted R3, then it sounds like it doesn't really matter.
Okay, thank you.
Eight thousand, Richard, 8,000 square feet per unit is what you said, so that would be 10.89 units. 10.89, so about 11 units.
But aren't those two?
I'm done.
For a two-family?
And Richard, if it was, if it were single-family residential, it'd be what, 7,200 square feet, so, I'm not sure what that math would work out to, number of lots.
Well, and, Mr. Amburger, the subtle difference there is, with the R2 and the two-family, they may be able to move them more to the north of the site, out of the flood zone, and have more units, whereas with the R1, because of having to put in, they would have to put in a road, that would...
Either way, the math looks like it works out to around 10 or 11 units, just, you know, give or take what the actual number is.
Any clarification on whether or not...
It could be developed as an R1, look at East Ridge Place, that's, and those homes go for quite a significant amount of money. So, it's not as though there couldn't be a return on the property as it's zoned, and this is not making, doesn't, isn't the four acres, I don't know what the minimum is for an R2, and I'm not sure if two acres make it, and so you're already waiving a code, and you're participating in what is already a heavily trafficked residential street. So, try to make it work the best you can, and this certainly isn't doing it. I think the staff was on point, and the residents that have come down to address it are on point. I appreciate the owners of the property and the developer working with residents and meeting them, I think that goes a long way, but there's also a point where it becomes on as a PUD, so much more could be put into this as far as amenities and fitting in with the character of the area.
Is it inappropriate for me just to ask, show of hands, if anybody supports the application as it's presented? Just, does anybody? Does anybody support the application as it's presented?
I think our question is deciding whether we deny it or hold it over, that's the question.
As far as, I'm sorry, do they support it as far as the rezoning or denial?
As it was presented today, I just saw two hands, as presented for R3 with 72 units, or 18 units, 72 bedrooms. Yeah, that's two. So whether it's held over or denied, I mean, it's essentially doing the same thing.
Is East Drive a public street, or does Ridgefield on East Drive? Is that part of the subdivision, or is it a public street?
Of course it's a public street, so is Ridgefield's roads.
Yeah, public.
Just making sure.
Yeah, it's a public street.
Okay.
Richard, which is going to be the most efficient way for the applicant to come back and with changes to try to get, to try to get an approval? Hold over or withdraw? Or denial?
Hold over would be a quicker route for them.
Okay, so, yeah. I second Ms. Rich's denial motion.
Have a motion to deny, that's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Application is denied. For the record, there's one note. Item number 10, under new group applications, parts A and parts B are both recommended for approval, subject to staff recommendations. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
That's a zoning and a sub, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items pass. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before us?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned.